All right, are we out of executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You are good to go. You're recording again outside of executive session.
All right, very good.
I'd make a motion for Lisa to make the changes we discussed in executive session to share those revisions with Dee for clarity and then to give that to the Chair for signature.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those no? All right, very good. That motion passes. And so Lisa, I'll send you the little edit that I had. But otherwise, again, great work. Thank you. That is-
Terry, I think I got it. Don't worry. I guess I took my little picture.
Did you seriously take a picture?
I did.
Okay. Yeah. And then, yeah, Jennifer, if you could look into how we can do that, I mean, since, I mean, you know, I think we'll be meeting like this for a while. You know, sharpening up and making more efficient how we can edit documents and stuff like that together. Minimally, I know we could do it through by creating a shared Google Drive. But if there's a way of doing it in Teams itself, obviously, that would be even more efficient. So if you don't mind, if we could try to figure that out, I would appreciate it. And, and again, if you just simply need me to create a shared Google Drive for this group, I'm happy to do that, too. But it probably would, it would be better, I think, if it were like a city thing and a, you know, a municipal run thing.
Yeah, I think so, too. There, you know, technically, public records that should be maintained by the city. So I went ahead and sent a message to our IT person who oversees Teams, and we'll see what he has to say.
Right on. Great. Well, thank you. That would be really good. Okay, let's see. Let's take a look at where we are in the, in the agenda. Next is, I think Marcia's thing, right? Marcia, as predicted, just whipped it right out. Man. Uh, let me see if I can find it. Where is it? This is Lisa's thing. Did anyone have any-
Yeah, go ahead. Did we address moving Agenda Item C to the next meeting?
Oh, you know, no, we did not.
I make a motion to move Agenda Item 6C, the potential revisions to the municipal code, to our next meeting, so we can have further discussions on that.
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those no? All right, so that'll be moved, Madam Clark, that'll be moved over to our, our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Well, that brings us to Marcia's opinion. Marcia, thank you for getting this. Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. Holy cow, it is so much easier to deal with these opinions when they come out this fast. Yeah, usually for us, it's like it comes out, you know, we get the draft. Jackie, that's not true. Jack, you get your stuff out really fast, too. When I do it, it takes forever because Steve Strom keeps not returning my emails. Okay, so does anyone have any comments about Marcia's opinion here?
Well, guys, I've had a whole bunch of edits on top of hers, so I wonder if we start there?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
And should we, again, do that in executive session, or what do you guys think?
Well, most of your discussion last meeting was outside of executive session, and you were stating your opinions there, so.
Yeah, I agree. I said, yeah, if people are okay. Dee and Lisa, you're our counsel. What do you think?
I think it would be fine. There isn't anything particularly controversial, anything pertains to a person's reputation or political issues.
Chair, if I could beg your indulgence, do you mind if we take a brief one-minute break?
Wow. Begging my indulgence. Yes, yes, of course. I grant it. I grant your indulgence. All right, let's, let's take a one-minute recess of and get, I'm gonna refill my coffee cup, and maybe other folks can read again Marcia's opinion. Again, Marcia, thank you so much for getting this out right away. It is just awesome to have this stuff done right away. Yeah, let's take a one-minute break, and, and we'll come back.
And Dee, let me know if you want me to screen share the document with your edits in it.
Okay, yeah, Jennifer, are we gonna share, screen share Dee's thing?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, so I won't, I won't, I've got a copy of the original draft, but if Dee's already got edits on it, let's, let's look at that one. All right. Hey, how's everybody doing otherwise? Jack, how's your, when's your bike coming in?
Any day is what I hear, you know.
That is, that is awesome. Yeah, it's a yeah, I got a new-to-me bike off Craigslist the other day, and so it has been great. So, and then Jeanette got a new bike, so we were out last night. So I was just saying, I think Jack's getting a new bike while we're all be out here.
What kind of bike is Jack getting?
I, my mountain bike was 16 years old, and so, yeah, it was time for a new mountain bike. As Terry said, we rode down the backside of Powerline last summer, and he rightly observed that I was going to kill myself on it, so.
That, that is like, that is such a scary ride. Oh, my God, I've run that. I've never ridden that. I can't imagine you people riding that. That's insane.
Yeah, it was, that was-
Yeah, there was a lot of walking. I was-
There was some walking, yeah, right, yeah, right. I'll tell you, yeah, even walking in mountain bike shoes, it was like challenging. And it was super dry. Remember, it was super dry last summer, so it was all crumbly and just ball-bearing kind of soil. It was, it was not good. Yeah, and poor Jack is like, yeah, and there's like, you know, old V brakes and this. I'm like, dear God, man, it's just, you know. I mean, I use that as an excuse. I tell Cheryl all the time that I need better stuff because it's a safety issue, but usually I'm just sort of like, you know, it's hyperbole usually, right? You know, but Jack, I'm like, dude, you've got kids. You're gonna break your neck with this bike. So I am glad. New bike on the way. I know, Lisa, and I don't see you in the woods anymore. It's like I ride around all the time looking for you, but it's just-
We have to, we have to change that. We had our special path that I kept seeing you on.
I know. I call that Lisa's Way now, you know, it's, Jack, it's that little, it's that little jog when, right before you pick up a paper plate. You know, when you go down, you know, you get up Ball Yard Boogie, and then you go down the little hill, and then there's that little trail you get on that takes you to the beginning of Paper Plate. Or if you go straight, you wind up hitting Speedway.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I ran into Lisa back there, like out of nowhere. I'm back, you know, you feel like you're in the middle of nowhere when you're back there, and I'm like, you know, and then like, I'm like, boom, Lisa comes out of the woods just running along. I'm like, oh, okay, this is like, you know.
Where's Ball Yard Boogie?
That's the one. It starts at the Abbott Loop Park parking lot, and it basically goes through the woods behind the ball fields there.
Oh, yeah, that, that, you know, I've never-
It's got the boardwalk planks. It's got the boardwalk planks that take you, yeah.
I have my own special names for stuff, but I've never heard that one. I have Treehugger. You know, by Treehugger, you know, the one that's right by where I saw you, Terry?
Yeah.
If you go a little bit to the left, before you get down to Speedway, there's that super steep hill where you've got, like, you have to grab onto the tree or you're gonna kill yourself. That's Treehugger. I gotta hold on.
Treehugger Hill, that's awesome.
I got a bunch of names. Now I got Ball Yard Boogie.
Oh, that is, that is great. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty cool. Yeah, that was all right. And so, yeah, so, you know, I don't ride back there now because, you know, once, you know, once there's no snow. We walked it with the family the other day, and man, it is like, rudy, and the boardwalks are falling apart, and it's like, it's like, oh, man, yeah, if there's not like a foot of snow covering this, this is not a fun place to be.
I'll be looking for you guys anyway. Be looking for you out on the power line, picking up the pieces of Jack's broken neck.
Hey, how's your daughter doing? Is she, is she doing dry land, cross-country ski training and stuff, or is she just running now? What's she up to?
No, it's insane, Terry. She's now in the high school group, so she's doing Alaska Winter Stars, and she's doing roller skiing, and she's running, and she's biking, and I mean, it's, it's insane. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's crazy. The bike's about a point of liberation, though, because she's hit that magical, it's like now her independent social bike to meet people, and yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
craziness. She's very fit. I mean, it's like four hours a day. It's insane.
That is, yeah, that is pretty wild. Yeah, the roller skiing, I think that's the one where it shows like you're like all in, right?
She loves it. Yeah, she's like a little, like a little beast. Just one giant muscle, like a little muscle girl. Pretty cool. It's keeping her sane.
Yeah, absolutely, right? I mean, it's like, yeah.
In which is not a bad thing.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, it's, well, and she'll be stronger for it next winter, right? It's like, you know, but man, the roller skiing especially, man, I've had some crashes on the roller skis that are just like, and then like, the APU folks and everything, they're like nuts. They're like, they go up like Glen Alps, and, and so, you know, one of them had a, Dylan Watts had a story, they were coming down Rabbit Creek Road, so they're roller skiing down Rabbit Creek Road. This was years and years ago. And as they're coming down, one of the wheels on Keegan Randall's roller ski falls off. She's like going down on one foot for as long as she can until she gets to a spot where like the ditch is relatively grassy, and then she crashes into this ditch. And I'm like, is that really a good idea?
It's, rollerblading suddenly seems safe. Remember that?
I, and I've seen people on the coastal track. I wonder if it's, it looks like it's coming back. I've seen more people rollerblading this summer than I've seen in like 20 years.
Yeah, I know. It's another, I actually got out my 25-year-old roller blades the other day, but I'm not any better at stopping than I was when I was actually, you know, when it was more legit that I did it. I just put, like, have someone in front of me and then plow into them. That's my stop. Put a big guy in front of you and plow into him.
That's funny.
So should we talk about this opinion?
Yeah, is Dee back?
I see Dee's little, isn't he there? Ah, Dee!
What happened?
I haven't backed forever.
Oh, my God. Dee, I'm so sorry. I thought you weren't here. Okay, wow, okay, sorry, sorry to waste me, well, talk about misuse of municipal resources. That's it for me. Okay, Madam Clark, are we gonna share the document that has Dee's edits on it? Was that the idea?
Sure. Dee, do you want me to share it, or do you prefer to do it so that you can make edits? What would you like?
If you could share it.
Okay, I'll get that up. Can you all see that?
Yep.
And Terry, for everybody who wants, people need time to read this or not?
No, it sounds good, yeah.
Okay, so the first edits, if I could, could, Marcia, Marcia, feel free to jump in. The first edits were just simply things that made it a little bit more readable. And to try to, you know, sort of throw disclosure down a little bit, it was sort of in the middle of the paragraph at one point. And I believe, in terms of fact-checking, I don't know, I guess it was receive loans, Marcia, to pay for these upgrades, that that was the sort of the basis of the program. I just wasn't, I didn't, I didn't remember that one way or the other. So is it to receive loans? Is that what would happen to property owners?
That's what it said in his request.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
And again, I think I know, have independent knowledge, and it's the largest solar integrator, so I thought maybe I should fact-check that, because I threw that in in the last line of the first paragraph there.
It, it said that in the, the request as well, but I don't, I like, I don't know if that, I don't know, business owners oftentimes will say theirs is the largest, so I don't, didn't know if that was accurate or not, or.
Well, but it adds to the perception of the conflict.
Yeah.
And then you lay out the general rule, and, and I like the fact you put in the financial interest, because, remember, Terry, you and I debated a little bit. I think he definitely has a financial interest, and his company stands to benefit substantially. So I like to say, yeah, there, what, there is a financial interest, but the question is whether it's minor or substantial. And I don't know if people have their code section, and we remember, we talked about these factors a little bit. The first two or three, and Terry, you were sort of the leader of this analysis, the first two or three, we thought, weren't applicable at all, and then it made the last three superfluous. Does this opinion need that? I mean, the opinion says, hey, we think, you know, as long as he's just doing the data thing, and he doesn't develop the proposal, and doesn't do anything else, he's good. Do we think it's important to put in sort of Terry's analysis of those factors? Or do we need to get that esoteric in our analysis? Is that helpful to other people? And I debated that, because maybe it is helpful, but I'm just not sure. So maybe if Terry, if we, so anyway, I leave that to the group, whether it's, it would be helpful to go back through those first three factors and throw that into this, or no, let's just leave it straightforward.
Well, I guess my view is, and that was the only sort of like broad suggestion I had for, for this opinion, because I thought it was, was great otherwise, was to have that analysis in there. Like, in the guidance section of the opinion, you know, it says the board advisement with a two-prong approach. And I think the, the two sort of prongs that we need to, to look at are the, the section about conflict of interest in the code. And then there was the second section that we were looking at, like, can you have an interest in a municipal contract when, when you're a member of the municipality, right? And, and, and so we went through both of those analyses and determined that while he has a financial interest, it's not substantial. I do think it's worth going through that analysis, like just sort of showing, here's, as we go through, here's the criteria for what counts as a substantial interest. And here's why the board thinks that his interest is not substantial in this case.
Yeah, and Terry, I'd forgotten that other section that we had gone through.
Yeah, that's right. We went through, we went through both those sections, right? So what was it? It was Section 115-100, interested in municipal contract or business with the municipality, and 060, conflicts of interest, right? So we, we, I think we thought that both of those wound up being applicable to this case. 115-100B2 says, "A public servant or a member of the public servant's immediate family or household may not acquire, receive, apply for, be a party, or have personal or financial interest in municipal grant, contract, lease, unless the public servant does not take official action that could directly affect the request for services nor the award execution, administration of the grant, contract, or lease." And there, I think we had said that the analysis was slightly different. It wasn't so much that his interest was substantial or not. It was that as long as he's just providing data for the proposal construction, he's not taking official action that could directly affect, and I think that's the key word, that would, that could directly affect any downstream benefit that he might have in terms of, you know, a grant or an award of a loan or something like that. Does that make sense, Dee? Is that sort of-
Yeah, no, so I think that, yeah, so I think you're right, that we need to put in a section about that. Plus, the 100B2B talks about, and/or you can bring it back to us, which of course they're doing at this point, so we can fall under both of those. So that would be a separate little discussion, but it's not in this, not yet in this opinion.
Right.
So maybe we want to finish up with the analysis under, because I think that is important, because that stands right out, and I think it's very educational for other people, like, why can he do this? Oh, yeah, because of this. Is, one, if we should go back then to the, the first one, because Marcia started in on that one, the 060E factors for determining, and throw that into an analysis, and then come back to this other one as a whole separate section.
Yeah, I think, I think that sounds, that sounds right to me. So maybe in the code section of the opinion, flesh out, so maybe in the code section, there's two elements of the code. You've, you've got 060, and then maybe add in that section, that the other relevant section of the code is 100, 1.15, 0.100. Then in the, let's see. Yeah, and then I guess in the yeah, I guess if you add the 1.15 100, well, I guess, what do, you know, what do you guys think would be the best way to do it? I mean, should it be after that first paragraph in the code section? Should we then, should we just get into the analysis at that point and lay out the, the criteria for when there's a conflict, a substantial conflict of interest? And get into why that's not going on here, and then go into 1.15 100? What do you think? Dee, what do you think?
Yeah, well, again, maybe for simplicity's sake, let's start with 060E, the factors.
Right.
Or does this one, does not take official action? Could directly affect. I don't know. I think if we did the, the other one, the 060E first, that would explain why we don't think what he's, he's not really taking official action, or we can quickly dovetail, and by the way, and this is not effectual, official action based on what we just said above. In fact, I think we dismiss this 100 B2B or B2A based on that, well, based on our above analysis when we're talking, then this isn't that issue either. So maybe if we just start with the 060E and we set, we just go through those factors.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I mean, because, because once we say for E2, that, you know, that his interest does not directly and substanti, substantially vary with the outcome of the, of the official action, I, I think that directly then just goes into, you know, our conclusion about 100, right? It means that is he taking official action that directly affects, directly affects his interests downstream? And the answer is no, because we've already said that in our conflict of interest analysis.
Right. Okay, well, let's go through those factors then, Terry, because then we would just outline them. So we say 060E sets forth, well, I should say, set forth, sets forth, TH, I'll put it, I'll edit my section, sets forth factors in determining. And then the first is, one, whether the financial or private, so I'm saying, let's lay out number one. And is a substantial part of the matter under consideration? And Terry, I think that we thought it was not, I'm just trying to refresh my memory, we thought it was, and Marcia, because you just listened to that take, too, is it was not a substantial part of the matter. Matter, and I see, then, then the whole thing is, what's the matter under consideration?
Yeah, since the matter under consideration is, is just significantly broader than, than any particular interest he has, right? I mean, the, the matter under consideration is the development of, you know, a, a green bank that may or may not make various kinds of loans and investments in businesses and, and enterprises in, you know, in Anchorage.
Okay, so I'm putting matter, the matter under consideration is whether to invest SAF, and I'm gonna, I would introduce that early on, so the 49th Street Angel Funds, it's just easier, because we have so many different 49th stuff. SAF funds in a green bank. Right? A green bank. Okay, versus what he's doing. Okay, which is providing data. Right, so I'm just saying versus providing data. And maybe we have to talk about the process there. That the, the level of this is providing data, which goes to a project group. We kept talking about a project group, and that to them is a big deal. That's a bunch of different people. Maybe we find out what that actually is. I'm gonna put a something. Okay. I have a kid that's coming through and taking my phone and putting my face in front of it so he can get into Apple.
Oh, yeah, mine does that, too.
Yeah, okay.
Or he wants my thumbprint. He says, stick your thumb on this.
Mine's all face. I should, every time he does that, I should make a face so it won't recognize me.
My kids have this little hand gesture they make when they sneak in while in one meeting, and they want to know if they can use screen time. They do this to represent their Chromebooks that they have.
Oh, that's cool. Okay, versus providing data to a project group, and I'm gonna put, maybe, I need to get more info from Joe on this, what the project group is. Because remember, it was, it was a whole conglomeration, and that will help the, that is, it really is pretty attenuated, so just to a project group, which then determine, then when, that then determines whether to even, well, they have to, they determine whether to work with a project or to make a proposal. I guess I could get that from Joe.
Right.
Whether to proceed with, with a proposal. And, all right, so let's figure that out. Matter of decision, whether to invest SAF funds in a green bank versus providing data to a project group, get more explanation of what that means, which then determines whether to proceed with the proposal, and finally, to a recommendation to the SAF board before, something about, and then, then we still have the recommendation to the Assembly, not to the Assembly, to the Administration. So we're good, would we conclude, Terry, that probably the first step of providing data is not a substantial part of whether to invest SAF funds? So providing data does not equal, equal investing a a determination by SAF board. Okay, I, let me massage that a little bit.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, and generally, my, my thought is sort of like, at least the way I thought about Jack and Marcia, I don't know how you thought, but it just seemed to me that the issue at hand is, should we propose, and what would the proposal look like for a green bank? And it just seems to me that matter is far, far broader than any particular interest that, that Mr. Trimble might have. Is there, you know, and this gets into the next analysis, like, is there a potential downstream way? Is there, you know, and this gets into the next analysis, like, is there a potential downstream way in which his interests get caught up in this? Yeah, sure. But it's not a substantial part of the matter at hand. The matter at hand is this very broad question about what would the proposal for a green bank look like?
I apologize, I'm typing, but I can't keep putting and then types at the same time.
Yeah. Jack and Marcia, is that, is that what, what were your thoughts about this first one? So is it a substantial, is, is interest a part of the substantial matter at hand?
Yeah, well, when we talked about it, it seems like providing data is so far removed from what the, what any recommendation of the proposal would even be, right? He's not constructing it. And so it doesn't seem like he had, has a substantial interest. That, I mean, that was my understanding of what we talked about too.
So would we say, so the downstream potential, I'm just trying to speak out, the downstream potential economic benefit is not, no, it's not there. No, no, nevermind, I'm going to get myself in a hallway, take it back.
Because there is potential of, yeah, but it's not, he's very far removed from that.
Okay. Jack, what do you think?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so then let's say like the next one, whether the financial or private interest, so that which is his downstream benefit substantially varies with the outcome of the official action. We go, I guess we, then we say again, it's not data. The provision of data is too, too, you know, is, is the, what are the words? It's too far upstream. Terry, come.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say it's just too, I'd say it's too indirect. I say that the, the, the connection between providing data and any downstream effect on him is, is too indirect or attenuated or, you know, whatever indirect like word that you, that you want to use. And it seems to me, you know, and, and again, it's on both sides. On the one hand, all he's doing is providing data. And all that's, all that's at, you know, play here is whether to create a, a green bank. So just the, the mere creation of a green bank in no way directly or substantially affects any interest that he has, right? I mean, the green bank might get set up and it might not choose, you know, might choose to, you know, do things that don't benefit him at all. You know, it's just, it's, it's, it's not a, a direct connection to his particular interests.
Okay.
I mean, especially since, you know, and there we, and that, and there to me, it is, it starts becoming more and more important that he's simply providing data. He's not actually writing the proposal itself. So, you know, so he's not in a position to sort of like personally massage the proposal in a way that steers things towards his interests. He's simply providing data to the people writing the proposal.
And I think that's helpful, by the way, that we should put someone down there that he can't steer, but okay, that, that's helpful. And so three would be much the same.
I was going to say, and then most of that's going to flow into, into three, right? I mean, it's like, you know, you would need the green bank to be set up and then several other things to happen before his interests would really be involved.
Okay. And then we thought that four, five and six, we didn't need to really look at, given one, two and three, but I'm trying to figure out how to get there again. Well, maybe four, five and six, one is whether the financial interest, so his interest in that company is significant. And yes, it is.
Right.
It's not generally possessed by a large class of people. And number six, whether we provide disclosure stuff. But then we again, consider in reviewing these factors, even though those two factors would stand out, but we think it's just too indirect.
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, I, I think we concluded that for four and five, yeah, it's significant monetarily and it's, and it's a somewhat unique interest, given his, his position in, in the solar power industry. But that just shows that there's a financial interest. One, two and three show that is it substantial? And is it, is it substantial in a way in which his official action directly affects his interest? And for one, two and three, we're saying it's not. And so in that sense, you know, we, we, we can say for four and five, yeah, it's, it's, it's significant and it's unique. But because of our analysis in one, two, three, it's not substantial and it's not directly linked to his official actions.
Do we need to, would it be helpful to define official action? I don't think it does. Well, here actually it does. So if you look at 060 C2, action, official action does not include action on a matter that does not substantially evaluate or impact the merits of the recommendation or decision. So actually, that's perfect.
Mm hmm.
Right? That, because we keep using official action. So maybe we should figure out where to throw that in, because that's exactly right. He's not going to evaluate or impact the merits of the recommendation.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's a good catch. Yeah, because that, that, that is, as it turns out, pretty central.
Okay. Where do we throw this in? Well, maybe just have to throw it right in, Marcia, put in all the different rules of financial interest and then put in official action because, well, I guess in the, the general rule, the word official action comes up. Maybe we put it between the general rule and then we put in the word, the definition of official action after that one. And then we go to financial interest. So we define that. Let's see, that's 1.15, 060. C2. Okay. So we define that and then a financial interest. And then maybe we say before my little part where I put, he is the owner of the company that stands to benefit, holds a financial interest. Maybe for that, say that his official, his official action in this case is providing data. And the financial interest, so if we've laid the groundwork. And a because right there, that sets the tone that the official action is providing data.
Yeah.
And then the factors, okay, that would work. Okay. I think I can get there from that.
No, and then, and then that particularly will make, should make quick work of the
Yeah.
115, 100 concern, right? I mean, that, um, once we've kind of reached this analysis, you know, again, because, and the reason why I say that is that because in B2 there, it's, the public server does not take official action that could directly, you know, and, and we're already saying, you know, this, this is not really official action that is related to his particular interest.
Yeah. Yeah. So that really falls in nicely now, having, after, having gone through that other stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll make quick work of that. Yeah.
Okay. 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 Okay, Doug. Okay. So we, we've got some rewrites here. And Marcia, I don't know if, if I send you my notes here, whether you want to take it over or me. The only issue with me is time, that again, editing yours, what took me no time at all. Getting down and drafting this is much more time consuming and is whether you would feel comfortable, but you took my, if I sent you my notes, because I've been taking good notes and putting things in and made another draft that you could send back to me and I could work with. Or Marcia, if you think that's too tortured to do it that way.
Yeah, no, I can do that.
Okay. Because I took pretty good notes where I think we should. And then, because again, it's so, it's, and it really, it was just a pleasure that I remembered the conversation while I'm looking at your opinion. Like, wow, what a concept.
Yeah. If you send me those notes, Dee, I'll, I have a little bit of time tomorrow afternoon and then my schedule gets real bonkers next week. So.
Yeah, me too. You got, you got classes starting next week?
Yep. I'm critically building a class on Blackboard. So that would be, I can have it back to you pretty quick if I get it like this afternoon.
Okay. Well, I'll just send this right to you after the meeting because I, I think it will be helpful. Just walks us through the analysis.
And does the board wish to see this opinion again? Or would you like to make a motion to move it forward after edits?
I think we should see it again. There's pretty substantial adding that whole second section. So I do think we should see it again.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. We've already given him oral sort of guidance. And so, you know, the, the delay to our next meeting, I don't think will be all that. It won't be an undue burden on his, on his work.
And that's the beginning of July anyway. So it's not too much longer, you know? It's really only a month to turn around.
Yeah, right.
And Marcia, remember I said I would probably fact check a little bit about the proposal, the, the, what is called it, project group? Just go ahead and leave those blank and I'll do that. You know, just do what you can with this analysis and any of the blanks I'll follow through on.
Okay.
All right, right on. Let's see. Okay, very good. New business? Do we have new, new business? Member comments? Do we have any member comments? It was great to see you all. Audience participation? Anyone in the audience?
It'd be surprising if someone piped up.
Yeah.
In case we have someone, you know, joining during executive session. Do you have no participants?
No participants. Okay. Next meeting, July 9th, nine to 11. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
And real quick, Dee, did you want to speak to a potential of a new board member?
Yeah. Well, I think we mentioned it a little bit earlier, actually.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Another new board member? Oh, I mentioned that Jason Bakinstad, the mayor's chief of staff, was getting in on the addendum, which he means he has all the paperwork in by tomorrow at noon. So it goes to the meeting Tuesday night, the assembly meeting. And then there's a 10 day or two week public notice thing. Actually, the next, the assembly skips one meeting in July. So I think it's not till July 14th, but we would have our new board member then.
Okay. All right. But one's on the way. That's great, right? And so, and we need one more after that, right? So if everyone could, you know, continue to think, kick around, you know, you know, thinking in your head at least ideas of people who might be good members of the board, I would appreciate it because it would be nice to get back up to full strength for these meetings.
And Jennifer, then also she would be on board the 14th. When was our next meeting planned for?
The ninth.
Yeah, July 9th.
We might invite her to participate, you know, to at least listen to that meeting. And then training for her is usually going through the code pretty quickly. And whether one of us wants to do that. I mean, when I do, I'm supposed to do training for one of the assembly members. And I was actually thinking myself and or Terry, because we've sort of teamed up with the assembly in the past. But we have a little, I guess our PMP is for, our PowerPoint is for assembly. But I like just going through the index and talking people through it. Do you think that would be worthwhile, Terry, us getting her some of this information ahead of time, an hour or two?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, or if you're going to do that, I'm happy to join you and sort of just like walk through the code. I think that would be immensely helpful to just sort of like, not only walk through the code in terms of the substance, but say, look, here's, you know, the kind of issues that we typically have to deal with in this part of the code and, you know, and here's, you know, and that would give us a good time to talk about requests for advisories versus notice of complaints and things like that. I think, I think just walking through that is, and getting a little bit of the history of how the board's been working and dealing with those parts of the code would be really helpful.
Okay. So either we could do it together, I would estimate an hour's worth of time.
Okay.
Or if anybody just is dying to do it. I would love to volunteer, but other than that, Terry and I have done this. I just have to keep him off the gifts to teacher section so we can get through the hours. That's a 20 minute diversion every time.
That's a 20 minute right there. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And I was, I don't agree with him, but I always start that out that way, one or the other. So.
Yeah, yeah. There's, you know, you know, Dee, there's someone I work with at school, I'm on a committee here and, and it's like, you know, and I feel a real affinity between you and her because she has like the same thing, you know, like she's sort of my boss, but she's sort of like, you know, okay, one thing we're not going to do in this next committee meeting is we're not going to start arguments. We're not going to start debates. And, and you're going to, and Terry, you're going to listen to what people say. And I'm like, wow, this sounds like Dee. This is like.
Does this work?
Yeah. As, as they say, like when you bring a philosopher into a group, right? You know, is, is it a bug or is it a feature of the program that, you know, it's just, it's the way we are? Okay. So yeah, Dee, I do appreciate it. But if you want me, Dee, if you're really pressed for time, I mean, I'm kind of pressed for time too. But I'm, I'm happy to do the training solo if, if you really don't have the time to do it. But it really, I think it would be great. I mean, for new members onboarding with the new members, getting that kind of background, like we're not just reading the code, but having someone walk through like, this has been the board's experience, this is the issues that we've been facing here, some of the pitfalls we've been trying to avoid. I think that's really helpful.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Why don't we invite her, Jennifer, if you could do that, to the next meeting on the ninth? And then, because we might be talking code revisions, which would be an interesting thing for her. But then wait till after the 14th, make sure she is appointed, I don't see why she wouldn't be, to do the training. Because the 14th is when she should get appointed, July 14th. Does that make sense, Terry, is to wait or?
Well, I think. Well, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, it, yeah, I mean, I think inviting her to the next meeting is the right thing to do. I guess the question is just, should we do the training before that meeting or not?
Well, she's not going to be able to weigh in necessarily on the items you're talking about because she's not, won't be a board member yet. And we'll get the training in before she's officially on board in your, for your August meeting.
You know, I wonder, I wonder, should we push that meeting back a week? If we just pushed it back a week, she'd be able to participate. What do people think?
She could watch the meeting on the, I'm just laughing. She could watch the meeting on the ninth and then realize why training is necessary.
Oh, Dee, I'm worried about the opposite, that she watches the meeting on the ninth and decides not to join the board.
Well, no, I, I think we need to cover that. I think you're right.
So if we moved, let's see, I'm looking at my calendar, we're meeting on the ninth. If we, yeah, if we met on the 16th, would you just be moving it back a week? She would be appointed, she'd be able to participate as a, as a full member. Does the 16th work for people?
Let me check.
Yep.
Yes, that would work for me.
Dee and Lisa?
I think so. What time roughly would that be?
I think that would be our usual, well, we would shoot for our usual nine to 11.
Okay.
And it's fine with me too.
Well, right on. If you guys don't mind, let's do that. Yeah. And then we get her a month earlier, especially since we're going to start talking about code revisions and stuff like that. You know, the more eyeballs, the better. So. Okay. Madam clerk, if we could do that, let's move our, our next meeting to July 16th, nine to 11.
Okay, we'll move it.
All right. Thank you.
Terry, we should do training before the 16th.
Yes.
So that's just a timing issue.
Right.
I guess, I don't know if you have time to do it on the 15th. I, I don't know if it's really important to wait till after she's appointed. Again, we've, we've not appointed people probably twice in the history of the last 10 years.
Right.
Generally in litigation or something against us.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, yeah, maybe the, you, I and her should just coordinate and find a time, anytime, yeah, but lead it before that meeting. And I'm with you. I don't, you know, you know, unless there's some significant issue, I think we, yeah, we could do it even before she's appointed. If that's, if that's. I think we, yeah, we could do it even before she's appointed. If that's, if that's scheduling, if that's going to work out better, let's just do that.
Okay. And so I think I still have a resume, but I need to get her probably phone number, and Jennifer, if you have that, easy access to that, although I think I'm the one that sent it on to Jason, so I probably have it, and Jennifer doesn't.
Well, I'll have it tomorrow when it gets submitted to the agenda, Dee, so I can get it to you if you need.
I wonder if we left her phone number on her resume, you know, we keep forgetting about that. We're trying to stop doing that, so it's not public record what people's phone.
Yeah, right.
And we keep forgetting that.
Yeah, I crank call Jack all the time because you left his phone number on his resume.
Oh, yeah.
So anyway, Terry, you and I can, and Terry, what is your, like, in the first couple weeks of July, are there periods of time to totally avoid, or, I'm fairly open a week ahead of time. I mean, I can reschedule anything.
Yeah, I have to admit, no, I mean, you know, our summer is really boring. I mean, like, we're trying to get out for little weekends and stuff like that, but we don't have any, we were supposed to be in Europe all this month, you know, and so that was our big summer plan, and so we didn't plan anything for the rest of the summer. So, yeah, no, my, my weeks, and my classes are online, but they're not synchronous, so, you know, aside from various school committee meetings, I've got just here and there, most of my time's pretty wide open.
Okay, so let me, maybe I'll make the first contact to her and find a good time, you know, set time for her, because she's a practicing attorney, and make call back and verify with you, okay?
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. All right, everybody, next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we are officially adjourned. Hey, thanks for the work, everybody, and thanks for the special meeting. I really appreciate it. I know everyone's super busy right now, so thanks for squeezing. And we finally, we got a lot of stuff done today, so thanks, I appreciate it. And Marcia and Lisa, thanks for getting those opinions in, and thanks for the quick turnaround. Marcia, and thanks for the, for the opinion, Lisa, great work, both of you, so I'm super excited about what we're getting done. So, see you in just a few weeks. See you on the, the 16th, unless, Jack, you get your mountain bike, then we'll see you sooner. And Lisa, I'll keep looking for you in the woods, you know?
I'm looking for you.
All right, everybody. Stay safe, everybody, and see you, see you in a few weeks.
Bye, guys.